Does he go?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Uh, your consideration for approval in minutes.
It's on hold.
Josh and Don. In favor, excuse me, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Four zero one, post. Uh, Marissa. St. James newspaper. Reporter. Stephanie, you're welcome. Could you see his little background? I mean, something, because.
Uh, yes, I just started at the Plainfield on Wednesday. So, I've been there for almost two weeks. Um, I live in Fairmont, Minnesota right now, so I drive back and forth, but I'm originally from Ada, Minnesota, which is by the Far Morehead area. Um, I look forward to working here in St. James and covering new news.
Very good. Welcome, thank you. Consent items. Any questions?
It's on hold.
Paul.
Sorry.
None, any further discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Licenses and permits. Uh, application for exempt permit, St. James Church, March second of two thousand fourteen. Your motion's on. Noni, second by Mike, any further discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes unanimous. The role business, uh, our last meeting. There was some changes made, Steph and Steve reviewed. Uh, change in design use for signal lights for Highway four and thirty, there's a resolution in your packet. Uh, having the changes that we talked about two weeks ago from parking lane that they want to propose nine feet to ten feet and no many roundabouts with the signal lights. Is that about the one? A bit of change, okay? On either of the intersections, so this meets with everyone's approval, we would be, uh, this is resolution form, a motion. In a second.
That's a great.
Okay, Josh, any further discussion? Uh, questions about this? Resolution will send this to Linda. All in favor, signify by show of hands. Post. Resolution passes five zero, unanimous. What do you think? You didn't answer thirty days, sixty days, what do you think, Mr. Speaker?
They've been pretty, pretty, uh.
They've been pretty efficient, like they talked to, uh, the Presbyterian church, they didn't answer pretty fast from that, so.
They know when they're coming back. Another open source or information. They indicated that they would be starting the designs phase in twenty twelve, so.
Twenty what?
Uh, excuse me, twenty fourteen. And also, um, I think you've noticed, I think they had some real issues in regards to some other communities in the area, so. I think you've got to get those off the table first.
Very good. Look forward to that. And, uh, thirteen A, new business. Resolution setting proposed tax levy, property tax levy of two thousand and fourteen. This is similar to what we passed preliminarily in our September, uh, preliminary hearing. This would be in resolution form.
So, move this up to reading.
Josh.
Second, just that's for the reading.
Noni, any further discussion? Any questions? Not all. Signify by show of hands. Post. Resolution passes five zero, unanimous. Next then is the resolution for the budget. If we pass the levy for two thousand and fourteen, again in resolution form, any questions?
So, move, discuss it with the reading.
Paul. Don. Sorry, did you want a second? Discuss with the reading.
Ten four.
Any further discussions? All in favor, signify by show of hands. Post. Resolution passes five zero, unanimous. Thirteen D. Excuse me, I mentioned thirteen C. This also is a resolution. Authorizing certification by the city clerk for the Lincoln accounts. Julie, want to speak to this all? Do you do this annually?
Yes, to do this annually, and, uh, the amount being certified as eleven thousand forty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Of that utility was seven thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars and forty-nine cents. And other items that we're able to certify are three thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and one penny. Uh, we also utilize revenue recapture. Whereby if you have money coming back from the state as far as a tax refund, we send your name into the state and they capture that money for us and comes back to us. And we've also turned some council over to Wendy's collection service, and that poses four thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-seven cents.
If they aren't able to be certified.
Correct.
And is it, do you get fifty percent or sixty of these dues? Wendy's, do you remember?
Fifty.
Fifty fifty, okay.
Are this the grand total numbers in comparison to the past few years, are they the same or higher?
Both same.
This also is in resolution form. So, move, get this up again. Noni. Paul. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by show of hands. Post. Resolution passes five zero, unanimous. Thirteen D is also in resolution form for the transfers from the budget in two thousand thirteen to each of respective funds that are shown on the resolution. It's also an annual transfer that we do every December. So, move this one. Mike?
Second, just that's for the reading.
All in favor of the discussion? All in favor, signify by show of hands. Post. Resolution passes five zero, unanimous. And guilty of this as well, if you can speak into the microphone, I have a couple people from yesterday's meeting ask, and I'm guilty of it as well, just trying to speak in microphone so you can hear it better. Uh, thirteen E, benefit changes for full-time employees, Joe.
What I'm proposing is a change in benefits for those employees that are eligible for Medicare, which they've got the option of. Of taking Medicare, put it say, and B, uh, rather than the city's insurance with the city reimbursing the, uh, the individual. The savings to the city is approximately fifty percent. This would also affect those employees that are eligible for Medicare due to this disability and employees whose houses may be eligible for Medicare or eligible for Medicare through disability. However, I'm requesting that all current employees be grandfathered in and have the option of either accepting or not accepting. They voted to make this change.
Can I come to the personnel committee?
This was reviewed by the personnel committee.
This is both for union and non-union?
Well, this would be non-union, we would have to negotiate the union.
Right.
And this is something that probably will not impact the city financially for a number of years. Since we are grandfathering them, the current employees. But it's also hopefully setting precedent and addressing future issues because.
Before they. Paul and Noni, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion grasped by. Uh, thirteen, yeah, approved. Law enforcement labor services contract for two years, Joe.
They accepted a two-year contract, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. The changes are as follows, twenty fourteen, a pay increase of two point five percent. Increase at each step. Twenty fifteen, a two point seven five increase at each step. Major medical insurance, single coverage for twenty fourteen, the city pays ninety-five percent of the premium, employee pays five percent. Single coverage for twenty fifteen, city pays ninety percent of the premium, employee pays ten percent. We also agreed to a comp time accrual increase to sixty hours, it was at fifty. And all of the other terms and conditions in the contract from twenty thirteen only made for fourteen and fifteen.
For which family is seventy?
Thirty.
Percent, seventy thirty, seventy employer, thirty employee.
And the HSA remains the same, where the city contributes two thousand, three thousand dollars.
And this, we've had Noni, Don, I and Joe met with the, uh. Mediator. Mediator, week or so ago, and this how this came out of the mediation, just hope you provide that. So, this, we're looking, yes. Yes, the personnel committee approved it and again mediation, so, uh. Motion by Noni is our second.
Second.
Josh, any further discussion? Again, to your contract, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries unanimous. Thirteen G. Return social service requests during written payment.
Currently, they're paying the city two thousand seven hundred dollars annually to rent the building, use the kitchen, the community room and serve meals, and also meals on wheels. They use it approximately one hundred and fifty-five days a year. And, uh, as of October of this year, they're no longer preparing meals in St. James. However, they're continuing to use the kitchen to prepare the distribution of food for that meals on wheels program and congregant dining. They are requesting that the amount be either reduced or totally donated, uh, due to the fact that the senior dining program has been significantly reduced due to sequestration of federal funds.
How many meals a day, Linda, you know? How many are served here, how many are taken out?
Somewhere between sixty and seventy, I suppose.
Is about half and half?
No, there's not as many here as there are taken out.
Okay, more, more. Could you present it to seventy? Among the, uh, Region Nine as well as the Region Nine board directors in their last couple meetings, this has come up quite a bit where there's, uh, some communities are physically losing the site that Noni is going to have the meals. So, I think it's important that we work with local social services for the seventy meals a day that's served to our folks here and that it continues and it doesn't close up because some communities have been forced, excuse me, some haven't been forced, but through the sequestration, there's cities that don't have it anymore. And they really wish they would have, so they need to be conscientious to this in that federal, I mean, that federal budget deal, that a lot of the sequestration funds are being replaced. Or partially reinstated, partly.
Well, how, what kind of dollar amount are we talking if they're losing? Do we know?
Everybody's, the sequestration is a cut of five point seven percent across the board, no matter what the program is.
So, they're going to lose five point seven percent of what they got last year.
Right.
How many hours are they, uh, here, uh, when it, when they putting the meals together to take out and then as far as, um, then having the site open, how many hours per day this year compared to, well, now, comparison to prior them taking out?
Jeff, he used to be here about eight hours a day.
Okay.
Um, now they're here, they come between nine and nine thirty, and they leave usually between one thirty and two.
Those are about half the amount of time that they're spending? So, what if we base it on that? I, I, I feel kind of fondly that we should be able to get something for using the building for the people who are working here and then also for the key, the electricity that you named. I think it's important that we get something from that rather than just totally giving it.
Yeah, and I, and I didn't mean to give it, I just meant that it's important that stays here in the service for the folks in our communities.
I agree with that. You've got to keep it here.
So, do you have a number that you think, then, if you're, does anybody else have, uh? Discussion? More thoughts, Mike?
I agree, I think it needs to stay, too.
Yeah, I agree.
Mike, done? It's fine to have it stay. I'm kind of here, not, should we have something?
Yep, sure. If they're here about as half as much as they used to be, maybe, uh.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent, if we cut it to that, I don't know.
Sure, they're a bit, right around two thousand bucks, eighteen fifty to two thousand bucks, are you?
Sure.
What do you want for a number?
It was eighteen fifty.
Eighty fifty, please, they have.
Yes.
Right, is there somebody, uh, motion in effect?
I can watch it.
Paul and Noni, is there any more discussion? That would be, was, uh, can I get it for January, you can? Yes. Any effect of?
Would you say a five point seven percent reduction?
Yes.
I didn't know how to be significant, set significantly to do it. Overall, for their overall program, it's significant, it may not be significant for this amount of money, but their overall program, they feel is significant. Plus, I've been told that there are going to be new standards coming up in regards to the types of foods that they can even serve the clients coming within the next year. So, some of the types of foods that they've been getting free from second harvest and places like that, they'll no longer be able to utilize them because of the lack of nutritional value that they may have.
How is it, Linda, how is it working now since October, when you're just kind of basically the conduit to put it together and get it out, is it seem to be fine coming along?
We bought some, uh, we bought some warming things that we put in the coolers. We bought them, I wanted to hear that. Um, uh, and then we cover it with a piece of cloth and we put the food on top of it so it stays warmer, and it was twenty degrees warmer by using that than if you, if you take it out and carry it in a flag, it gets cold, I mean, it's cold outside. So, we've been putting it in, in coolers with this thing in the bottom and then carrying it in that. So, that's helped.
Further discussion?
The money that the clients pay, Linda, does that go into LSS or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried unanimous. Uh, thirteen H. Resolution accepting donations for the community, Joe.
This year, we received monies for the following projects, the hanging basket project was three thousand six hundred eighteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. St. James Fourth of July fireworks, three thousand dollars, the community block party, nine hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. The kitchen fund, four hundred and three dollars. The fire department purchased equipment with monies they raised and donated to the city in the amount of eleven thousand seven hundred four dollars and seventy-nine cents. Princess Theater Committee donated five thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars and twelve cents. And the swimming pool did a fundraiser and raised five hundred eighty-eight dollars and forty cents.
They were all going to the respective.
For those, correct.
Very good. This is in, in the resolution form. Josh?
Second, that's where you.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor, signify by show of hands. Post. Resolution passes five zero, unanimous. Thirteen I, demolition loan program, Molly.
Good evening. A week or so ago, we hosted, um, D, the Department of Department of Economic Development, for them to tell us and some of the other local communities about the redevelopment program and this new demolition loan program. This particular program came out of the legislative session this year. Um, as a result of communities much like ours having blighted properties and not having a redevelopment prospect in hand, however, those properties need to be demolished. So, this program is, um, came for those reasons. So, moving forward, um, I'd like your consideration to submit an app, to prepare an application for submission to D by February first permit, the deadline, um, for the demolition of the former hospital. Um, eligible applicants, uh, for this particular program are cities and EDAs. Um, eligible sites must be owned by the applicant, in this case, the former hospital, you may recall, was transferred to the EDA for tax purposes. Um, so we do need that particular eligibility criteria. Um, it must, the property must have been vacant for one year, which we know what is the case, and it cannot be listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Now, to my knowledge, it's not there, the last time we checked, it wasn't there, so I can't imagine it's on it. Um, but of course, that'll be one of the things that I need to check. Um, eligible costs include demolition and interior remediation, in this case, um, both asbestos, the, the asbestos removal, as might be necessary. As I mentioned, the application deadline is February first. Um, and this is the thing that makes this particular program attractive, um, in compared to the redevelopment program, is that we don't necessarily have to have that end user, as we've referred to it in the past, or an imminent development prospect. The particular, uh, financing pieces that come into play with this, the loan will provide a hundred percent of the costs, up to a maximum amount, amount of a million dollars. Now, when we had the, uh, demolition and asbestos removal looked at several years ago, I think we were somewhere around two hundred and fifty thousand for the asbestos and the demolitions. Um, the interest rate on this particular loan is two percent for up to fifteen years. Interest and payments would be free for the first two years, so you wouldn't have any obligation to make any payment until starting in the third year. And here's what makes this really attractive, um, is that if development occurs, up to fifty percent of the remaining principal, depending on when the development occurs, could be forgiven based on the development benefits, so the creation of jobs, the creation of tax base, et cetera. Um, what I'm asking for tonight is your consideration that, uh, we proceed with the preparation of, of an application. Um, and, um, the application would include the site information, the site evaluation, map, site features, history, current conditions, development, potential costs and analysis we have to do, um, and other financial information. Um, the application scoring, uh, at D, uh, will be most heavily weighted in the areas of extent to which the existing property conditions threaten public safety and the applicant's financial condition and ability to repay the loan. So, um, for the next month or month and a half, if you will, um, the idea would be that we would have contractors, we wouldn't obviously formally bid it, however, we would have to gather some costs in order to fully understand what our application would look like. The state was on very clear during their informational session that we hosted here in St. James in that this is a new program for them. So, uh, they're kind of learning, um, some of these pieces as they go as well. We don't know, you know, how many other communities are going to show interest in this because it isn't new, so, um, I think this is the best thing, since we've been looking, the best option that's presented itself to take care of this particular facility.
Because it's not, not a, uh, end user requirement.
That's exactly right. So, uh, the EDA reviewed it at their meeting on Monday morning and recommends approval. So, um, what I'm asking again from you tonight is your consideration just to allow us to prepare an application, um, in order for submission on February first date.
Then you can do it. You were able to do that, to get it all done and then before February one.
Yep, that's what I'm going to shoot for, um, we'll see how everything comes together, but yeah, that'll be the goal.
Good. Okay.
Second.
Mike and Josh, any further discussion? Anything you want to add?
No.
Because we have a commitment to our community, we spent sixty thousand bucks getting rid of four houses here this year, this is, this has just been the term yesterday, was picking the can down the road. They dislike saying that a lot because you hear it on TV and it's a bunch of people not necessarily telling the truth, but we're going to do what we should have done a couple years ago. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried unanimous. Thanks, Molly, for your work on this, and thanks for finding this. I'm getting it, you know, even working diligently, so thanks for doing that, because we would have never found it, had we not, we kept the press, it was to, uh. Uh, Don. Paul. Steve. Don, you forgot to bring up for information only, that MediaCom is.
Oh.
Adjusting their rate, such a pain of ass pace, shall shock me. We don't.
If somebody has all those services, their rates are about seven fifty on their monthly bill, so.
We don't, again, the city has no control over MediaCom, but we get lots and lots of calls on it, there is an adjustment, a raise coming in your billing, starting January two thousand fourteen. Again, the city has no control over MediaCom, on rates. Yeah, coffee hour yesterday, as of January first, uh, waste management takes over, are they going to offer a low volume user toll, so explaining this to folks over here, they'll have something in paper. So, if for, uh, folks that are not a very large family, they can have a smaller toll and they can get it, uh, picked up every two weeks instead of weekly, to say, at a, a reduction in cost.
So, they're going to continue with the plastic bags?
For the normal, yes. Nothing should change other than if there's somebody that doesn't need to have a weekly service, should be, was it four dollars a season? Anyhow, there's a reduction in waste angle, we'll have some information, or please call them, uh, if you don't feel you need a bag or want to get a smaller toll. Depo card wire transfer scams were discussed, don't give information out over the phone to anyone regarding your account number or PIN numbers, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that, Mark?
Just, that's the main thing.
Right, so. City has seven hundred fifty-two renting units, and the pay rate this year was between fifty-five and fifty-eight percent, pay only rate. Most landlords are very cooperative, addressing issues, and Bill has gone back and doing his second, first round of reinspection, I think he's about fifty to seventy-five percent done with reinspections. HomeServe residents received letters in the last week again, or two weeks, and then down about three months ago, where you can, uh, they will give you insurance, the homeowners, to insure your water line from the street to the, uh, main line. City, again, has nothing to do with that, it's a private company called HomeServe that sends that out and looking to solicit business. Uh, city levy was discussed, snow removal, got a couple complaints on the street department rainbow for the snow removal. Uh, question came up about city doing Christmas lights, we were working with the chamber at the first year in this project for downtown Christmas lights, because the old ones were not, uh, functional very good anymore, and, and then the new lights that come out now are, used to pull one out, the whole thing would go blank, or, or out, but now the new ones, they don't?
No. No, it's just a string of light bulbs, it's, we don't use the miniature ones anymore.
Right, okay, so one goes out, the whole thing is in the wall.
Right.
Small cities grant pre-app, pre-application was submitted, Molly just talked about that. Excuse me, that's something different, I should address that, Molly, I'm sorry. Twenty-some.
We did at the council, um, you authorized the submission of the pre-application, so, um, given the feedback that we got from the neighborhood, we applied, um, in conjunction with Sleep Eye for twenty-four owner occupied properties, for, uh, four rental properties and for six commercial properties. Um, the commercial properties being just here in St. James, because that's where the interest was, so. We'll, uh, we'll hear from them, uh, after the first of the year, as to whether we, um, will be invited to prepare a final application, uh, to compete for, for that funding again, so.
And you already addressed the old hospital, with the performance plating building, maybe tell them about that when you came.
Um, yeah, uh, the performance plating building is, has gone for tax forfeiture, so it's actually, um, the county is, is, um, in charge of it, it's owned by the state because of the state, uh, tax forfeiture process, however, um, there, there's some issues there that need to be cleaned up before the property can be sold, some chemicals and other things. So, we have been, over the course of the last seven, eight months, working with EPA, um, uh, federal EPA, that is, to have them come in and do the cleanup for us. But as a result of those things, like you heard earlier with LSS, um, some shutdowns, other things, we've kind of been put on hold and we, we remain on hold until all of these things can get ironed out. Um, however, we re, remain optimistic that they'll come in, do the necessary, um, chemical cleanup, so that the property is at least marketable and, um, eventually we could get to that point where it may be put back on the tax roll, so.
We're good.
Please for the cleanup.
I'm sorry?
Please for the cleanup.
Well, in this particular scenario, if we're able to work it out with, um, federal EPA, they would take care of paying for it, they actually bring in, um, their consultants, um, to do the cleanup and then, um, um, their attorneys, so EPA's federal attorneys, take care of trying to solicit those dollars back from the property owner or whoever it is that, um, you know, from whoever they deem.
Whoever's within her, Steve?
Yeah, we, Don Coleman and I had a conference call with some, um, federal, uh. Yeah, we, Don Coleman and I had a conference call with some, um, federal, uh, attorneys out of Chicago, maybe four or five weeks ago, um, they were gathering that necessary information about the property, so, well, hopefully something will, will come out of it, so that we can get it cleaned up and hopefully get a redevelopment program.
Thanks, Molly. Thanks to the stray cat for coffee, and Linda Buller made fresh chocolates and cookies. Andy? Josh? Steve? No. Man, a very nice, normal colored shoes, unconsciously optimistic that Santa, oh, nice, looks nice, Adam. That Santa or Beth will maybe give you some nice new bright looking shoes for Christmas? Rainbow? Mark, did you want to stand, I didn't mean to, did you have anything you wanted to bring up?
No.
Mark?
Linda?
The name of the movie this weekend is The Hobbit, the desolation of Smog, it is a PG thirteen, it's two hours and forty-one minutes long.
Very good. Okay, abortion too? The Jersey sort of. Thanks everyone for attending, and Merry Christmas to everyone in the community, I'll say that.